My concern is like that if we have. I think some of us could be hard to access and get at. And if you're not an employer or something, I'm afraid about somebody getting injured out there climbing around and getting hurt, that would not be good.
We discussed that is their liability if people are trying to crawl up to get vegetables.
Just to have people going up in there and pick the green beans or something like that. I just, I don't think that's a good idea.
I didn't say green beans.
Well, any. Beets, carrots.
No, I didn't say beets or carrots. Scorch is a bigger plant and there is a bigger fruit and you can just reach up over.
But you plant scorch and I'll guarantee you'll have vines growing up to the street.
Was kind of my thought process was having lots of vines and greenery.
Liability is a huge concern.
I just, I'm a lot concerned about that. And to let people come in our courthouse rounds and I don't know.
Even opening yourself.
If we had a volunteer club, even like a garden club or something. I think there has to be some kind of a liability release signed or something like that. We have to work with the county attorney on that. What do you do?
They still water the stuff downtown. The city.
City does.
They have a sprayer thing that they water with. I mean, I think it's like a cheap little ten dollar sprayer.
They take their truck every morning with a tank on it and have one of the city employees with their long extension loaded baskets.
Okay, so we need something to, we need to do something with the north end because we don't like the weeds in it, but we don't want to do anything. Is that my, what I'm hearing?
Well, if you put some fabric down and some rock inside of it or find out how to maintain it, it will drain.
Part of the problem is the fabric that's down there. It's been down there, the rock on top, and then you get dirt around the pebbles and then all of a sudden you're growing weeds. And then that makes it harder to do anything with because you have the pebbles you're trying to dig around.
I think the biggest issue is the ongoing maintenance. Who's gonna be responsible? And quite honestly, I don't think our custodians are gardeners.
I want to use an example. There, there was a beautification committee formed years ago out to MHI. Everybody was great about planting all these flowers and doing this around. It was gung ho. Everybody was right at it for two years and pretty soon, third year, fourth year, less than us people going out there and doing something. Pretty soon it turned out to be a disaster. They just had to retool.
Well, in the first fifty years of MHI, it was the patients.
Patients do it, right.
And looked marvelous, but when they ruled that wasn't exactly all.
Well, we had thought about opening up to, you know, employees to go out on a fifteen minute break or whatever, get some sunshine. And this way it gets them away from their desk and it gives them some sun and we're actually showing to the rest of the community, hey, you know, gardening is a good thing.
I think we budgeted five thousand dollars. Is that correct? But I don't think that starts until July one.
Right, it doesn't start until July one.
I don't know. I, I just. Hey, I like the idea of figuring out some perennials to put out there. Something with less, less maintenance, you know, cost. If you can put something down, it's take some minimal maintenance. But I think you've got to start out first with getting rid of the dirt out of there and putting some landscaping cloth down and some things like that. Do some good job of prepping before anything's planted.
Yeah, I personally wouldn't, wouldn't use landscaping cloth and pebbles again.
We'd be a lot better off using whether it's some sort of bush or something, thinking honeysuckles or something like that that grow nicely, look attractive, bloom once a year and on something really low maintenance. Cause quite honestly, we do not have the people or the interest from our employees to go out there and maintain that. It's, that's my opinion.
As the B well committee, who's, who's taking, kind of come to ideas?
Well, we, we had just, there was only four of us. We haven't had those.
Doing a lot. So it hasn't been been presented to the B well committee to take on, and I don't know that that's something that we would take on.
Right.
Yeah. It was just something we walked past and Dawn had mentioned some ideas. So the committee members that were out there kind of gave some input. But like I said, I don't know if there's even a water source. If you're gonna have to carry water out to to water it, that's gonna be.
I'm all for beautifying it and make it look a lot better than it looks right now, but we've got to figure out a way that's workable. What's that?
I mean, I don't know. Is there any plants actually? And there's some green, I just walked past it when I came in. There's some greens pop, popping up, but I don't know that it's possible plants, but there are.
There are some hostas at the very, on the very top in the front.
That's I bet were planted probably twenty years ago. Otherwise I don't think it's probably been touched in twenty years, not even with Roundup. It's just something that nobody's ever addressed.
Right. So, no, it was just an idea and I was just trying to look for ways to utilize a planter that allows some green space and showed the citizens that we actually care about what the courthouse looks like and, you know, maybe promoted a little bit of outdoorness and, and health to our employees.
I have access to a lot of hostas that we did transplant. And they're easy, low maintenance.
Just something to think about.
I'm not opposed to it, but we need to come up with some kind of a plan that's gonna be low maintenance, liability issues, who we're gonna allow to do this and.
We want to have Dawn pursue this with the B well committee and see what ideas they can come up with. And you can get some people, employees from the door.
Present it to the B well committee and see if that's something that they're interested in participating in.
Right. That'd be great.
And if they are, then we will work with Dawn. And if it's not something that the B well is interested in participating with, then you know, it can be pursued.
Right.
And go from there. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And Chad was gonna be up here a little bit later to set the public hearing for the second meeting in Maryville subdivision. I don't know if we need him here for that. Okay.
No, basically you guys had the first public hearing, but it was never discussed on waiving the second and third reading. When you had the first public hearing. So basically we must have a second hearing. Once that is done, if the board chooses to waive the third, that is something that action can be taken at that time.
I think in order to do that, we actually have to have it on the agenda, possible waiving of the third reading. To let the public know. I know that that's how they, it's, I've seen it on other agendas.
I know we haven't done it that way in the past. It's just been discussed during the public hearing, but if you want to change it, that's fine. It's your agenda. It's up to you guys.
I think is big if, this is that we would be in error waiving those.
So you want to go with all three, which is fine. Yeah. So in your packet, I had the resolution to set the pub, the second public hearing for April twenty second at nine fifteen.
Okay.
I make a motion to go ahead with that.
I'll second that.
Time.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
Great. We have two minutes before our nine fifteen budget hearing.
Do you Brandon folks know if anybody, if Brandon Fire Department down there, do they have an active first responder group of people down there or not in the fire department?
They do.
They get.
They just had a fundraising meal this week. I think there's like twelve or thirty people on the fire department. I'm not sure how many first responders. I know there's a young lady that's just about that. I know my wife and I were EMTs on air banging stuff and we we were I've been there for a while. You know, I would, at this age, I might have to go over a year, retraining, relearn what is already learned, but but yes, they do. And then the first one, if there are any, it's their name. Even Jess's ambulance has come down.
That's good to know. Some, some areas are troubling. Go back.
Really is, is during the daytime like right now. Right. I know when I was fairly well entry principal, the superintendent allowed me to become a fireman and EMT because coverage during the day, two people, two non-professions, not like Waterloo, where two people couldn't handle an ambulance, you know, we three or four depending on how scared.
Nine fifteen, let's open it up for the budget hearing.
Make a motion, we open the budget hearing.
Second.
First and second, all in favors by, by I, I write the budget hearing is open.
We had a lot of, a lot of work put in this trying to make sure we remove the state laws and everything on it. I
I've only had three phone calls on it and they just wanted further explanation. And once I gave them explanation, they were satisfied, so.
So if you did have a, a decrease overall for the total levy by about eighteen cents. Looks like the total levy went down from eight sixty-nine, seven twenty-six to eight fifty-one, seven ninety-seven. Following fiscal year. Rural basic drop, the general supplemental increased slightly and general basic decreased slightly.
I think the, Chris, you are correct. The overall increase in tax actually will be one hundred and seventy-four thousand, wasn't it?
Hundred and seventy-two thousand, four thirty-two.
When you spread that out, it's be a minimal increase for individual properties.
If they have anything from, does anybody in the audience have anything?
No comments. I make a motion.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
Your hearing passes.
I need a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to approve the budget.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor.
All right.
All right. Resolution passes. Fiscal year twenty-five appropriation resolution.
That resolution was in your packet. It basically is a resolution stating the fund, the estimated expenditures for like public safety, legal services, all of our different areas. And this is required by code that you guys pass this so I can appropriate the budget July one.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
First and a second, all in favor.
All right.
Can you do the G I S?
Nope. Evan needs to be up here for that. Yeah, I think this, um, public comment? Do you have any public comments? Let's look at that.
We don't have our next.
Go ahead.
Are complaints regarding the rig setback requirements for neighboring dwellings? I'm assuming you're taking any public comments.
Yep, right now, yeah, because we have, I can't do my next public hearing until nine thirty.
That's two thousand six hundred and nineteen feet. If turbines are five hundred and eighty-two feet as proposed, the setback distance is less than one half mile, which many of us have heard that was suggested by an next era representative as being a good setback. That's the half mile. In two thousand and four, Scott Lawrenwood of the University of California reported on a Danish study establishing how far a blade or fragment could be thrown at tip speeds. At the normal maximum, a blade could be thrown to a distance almost one and a half times the turbine height and a hazardous fragment over three and a half times the height. At twice the normal speed, a complete blade could be thrown over two and a half times the turbine height and a hazardous fragment al- almost six and a half times the height. As the height increases, the absolute distance that might be thrown increases. In two thousand and four, turbine heights were three hundred and twenty-eight feet. The proposed height could be, county is five hundred and eighty-two feet. According to Firetrace, the top three causes of accidents in turbines are blade failure, fire, and structural failures. Ninety-one percent of turbine fires, however, go unreported. So if one of those fragments comes flying into your dining room window, possibly on fire while you're enjoying dinner with your family or through your child's bedroom window in the middle of the night, you'll want to know why we weren't afforded more protection. The wind companies will tell you that failure is very rare, but that same Scott Lawrenwood in California said, I used to work in the industry and I've seen them fail. We talk about blade failure in our industry on a very limited basis. Northern climates are ice throw. In Minnesota, a truck was totaled by an ice chunk thrown by a blade. Fortunately, it was not occupied at the time. Now we have a no worry. It appears that all that pile driving and digging from turbine construction and the tremors in the earth while they're running can damage your well and pollute your water permanently. It's happening in Canada and in Illinois and in Ireland where they have had guides for trying to protect the groundwater from turbine construction since two thousand and fifteen. I have no doubt that it's happening elsewhere. Rural life and farms depend on wells. So those setbacks mean more to us than just a visual buffer. They're for the safety of our families, our homes, our livestock, and our water. Don't let out of state companies try to trade our security so that they can add a few more turbines. If families and properties aren't protected and something catastrophic happens, people bear the legal fault. The wind company, the landowner, or the county for failing to provide enough protection. My guess would be that all will be sued. So for those reasons, we support the work of the P and Z and we need those setbacks.
Bonnie, did they mention in there, you mentioned about the wells from vibrations and stuff like that. Did they give any distances where this happened?
Not that I could find, but I could, I could probably look for that. Up in Canada, it was more than, than one well. It was, I mean, there were, everybody had their own wells, but there was a whole bunch of them. Neighbors finding out that neighbors. Uh, one family, they didn't even think about it being the turbines. And so they replaced all of their piping. They replaced the piping to the well. They replaced the casings. They did everything. Nothing helped. And then they started finding out that people on all sides of them were also having the same. And it all started when they started digging for the turbines because of that, you know, they pile drive very deeply and then there is a ground vibration. I never really actually really thought about that until I read about it. But when you're in the country and they're digging all over the place, it's not only going through the tiles, but it's going through the ground. And that can show you that a lot. So it's that we need the setbacks. They're really important.
And none of those vibrations can cause problems, uh, not per se with the wind turbines, but I know when they used to go out and blast forays for the rock and stuff like that. That blasting over the years has affected wells.
Oh, I didn't know that either.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, I can remember years ago that there were several wells that were affected by that when it was blasted. I call the Rasmussen quarry down there off the diagonal.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Yeah, I, I didn't think of that either. Thanks for bringing that up. Plenty of someone can still with one of those. He's been down. When we're rezoning for the, the dog camp. It's one of the complaints from the neighbors and the quarry was in our, that discussion was in our meeting. Totally not our apartment, but.
Time yet?
Yeah.
My ability with the fifty-five CSR, I heard Jordy Albert the other day talk about that. You know, due to the chemicals, the technology with that, you know, fifty-five CSR, we can go lower with, with our CSR. I, I've got a son that works at Beck's Seeds. He's been out to Hawaii. He's been to Mexico and some of the improvements they made. Where you think that she couldn't grow anything, they're able to grow things because of the technology, the chemicals, those types of things. You know, on, on the line of, of food fiber, livestock and preserving our land, that's in the Benton County planning and development comprehensive plans as we've got here. So for those people to try to claim that we're the P and C, I should say, is reinventing the wheel. They're not. I mean, that's, that's consistent in neighboring county. And also I don't know if you've seen the article that talked about the shareholders in Florida, the massive lawsuit against Next Era um, because of what they call the ghost candidates. So basically they're paying politicians for votes. And that's really scary after this last spring, when there were two different things sponsored by Next Era to take away the county or the city's local control. And basically in a, in a backwards way of trying to create dominant domain. So you know, I, I think our, our local rights are important. You lose your local rights. I mean, we defy everything that the constitution and all those things have been doing. And then, you know, lastly, the USDA has talked about, we're losing one point eight million acres a year. You know, Bill Sacks talked about not, not selling our land to to, you know, get rid of productive land and even Grassley's talked about it, you know, the, the grandfather of wind turbines has talked about that, that that's a worry we should have. And, you know, God only made so much valuable land. And once it's gone, it's gone. And, and we have enough examples of elders of, of what they're doing. They're tearing things up. And Clayton, you've been up to northern New Hampton. Um, those roads aren't, I mean, yes, they take videos and, and they say they're gonna repair the, you know, the, the gravel roads, but the damage is done. Nice things are wavy and it's, it's, it's not good. Just because you take a video and say that, hey, we're gonna replace it. Yeah, you can replace it, but you know, I could tear up the sidewalks here and then come back and use sackcrete or something like that. It won't last a year. So we have to be really cognizant. And another thing is I'm really concerned about a, a company that has a bad history with their subsidiaries and, and those type of things. You know, we talked about the thirty million dollars in lawsuits this company has had to endure. So why, again, why would we want to bring somebody into the county? And, and I don't understand, but did anybody vet this company? It's, 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 it's a shame if we allow this company to come in here and they promise things and, and as a, as of December twenty-third, they're like seven hundred and twelve billion dollars in debt, Next Era is. And that's, that's published report. So I don't know. I, I, as a landowner, Lee, see, I, I would be worried of the, you know, how long are they gonna pay? Are they gonna pay? What are they gonna do? And the other thing is technology improves. These dinosaurs are gonna be around. Who's gonna be responsible for it as far as the decommission?
That county was talking about New Hampton and stuff. Do you know, have you looked, looked at their ordinance? Do they have something in their ordinance up there saying that the utility company, the wind turbine company were responsible for putting those roads back?
That I don't know. I, I know that, uh, you had American bottom out before they were even done with the first phase.
And if it was in there, I just wonder if this is a, may be of the engineer, county engineer up there and supervisors that they didn't force them to bring those roads back to the condition they were supposed to be in. Well, I wonder if somebody dropped a ball up there.
County says that.
Chicasong.
That's Chicasong.
See, and, and you know, and over in Delaware, looking at this cost Delaware county, because the the company, and I think they're on their third different company of ownership over there, but they had to create a whole new department. Who's gonna pay for that? You know, who's gonna pay for the person that's in charge of, of, you know, was that three people? Is it four people? Is it five people? And that's gotta be up to the taxpayers.
I think that they, I, I think sometimes when they say they're gonna bring the roads back up to code, they are back up to snuff. I mean, they look like they're back up to snuff, but how can you, if the base is torn out, how can you replace twenty years of base? You just can't.
I don't know. I guess I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, I would just wondered what that Chicasong, what it says about that.
You know, sometimes people are afraid to say anything because they're getting money.
Yeah.
It's hard to get some information, even from some of the schools. It's hard to get accurate information on how much money they're really getting. Because some people are afraid. Cause I know that, I know in North Tama, and that's really the last place I was. And when the, one of the companies, there's still one remaining, that they met with the superintendents and, hey, North Tama, you, you don't have, you've got a stage, but you don't have an auditorium. Wouldn't it be nice to get an auditorium? That's how they play the game. I mean, they've, you know, do you need a new gymnasium? You know, do you need this? This is, these are some things that actually have happened.
My wood department that they have to create in Delaware. Was it for planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning, because they didn't have one. So, yeah, who's gonna pay that? Isn't that your county, Chris?
Yeah, one, no, I'm actually in Buchanan County, but we have, we do have a farm in Delaware. Cause it's right, right. I'm in the county.
A little bit of public comments later.
Yep. Let's go to our nine thirty, opening the bids for the sale of the county property.
Hey, I received two bids. Um, the first one is the sum of thirty-five thousand up to forty-five oh two.
Okay, that's an incremental bid. So he'll start at thirty-five thousand.
That's a just, I just read exactly what it says.
Yep, I know, I know exactly what he's talking about. It's local state language.
And it's.
How much does it jump by each time?
It doesn't say. It says thirty-five thousand up to forty-five zero zero.
Is there a contract with that? It's in the second page. I haven't got that part yet.
This is a red.
Well, he kind of, he warned me that he did it this way and I'm like, couldn't you just use it like everybody else? All right, here it is. Escalation clause amendment for purchase agreement amount. Where'd you put it in, buddy? Where'd you put it? Okay, there it is. It escalates by a thousand dollars each time.
And I have a business card too, so I can. EPM of Iowa, Tyler Rasmussen.
Does that matter to you guys?
He's got a thousand dollar antitrust attached to it.
Okay, let me write this down.
And it closes on the thirty-first, I believe. Of May.
Which practical sense?
You'll include pantry, building across from the post office.
Okay, open the other one.
Roll.
Is it played in the background?
Yeah. Um, and this one is from D V D E L L C. And the bid is for forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Say that again.
Forty-two thousand, five hundred.
Thank you.
Yeah. D V D E L L C. D V D E L L C. So it's like. Dog Victor Dog A. Okay, do we have anybody, anything else?
No, that was the two bids I received.
Okay.
Want to up the bid? Um, for DVD?
Actually, before, I mean, I'd, I'm gonna say it, your bid is the highest at this point.
Oh, no, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's not.
Yes.
Forty-two.
Thirty, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, but he ups it by a thousand dollars.
To forty-five, it says to forty-five thousand zero zero two.
Up to forty-five thousand zero zero two. So anything above forty-five thousand zero zero two is, would be the high bid.
And this one's for forty-two thousand five hundred.
And his was forty-five thousand or forty-two thousand, his high one?
Okay, forty-two, five, forty-five oh-two.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And you wanted to up your bid?
So he bid forty-five thousand and two dollars.
Yes.
Correct.
So I want to go forty-five thousand and five dollars.
Well done.
Three dollar cushion.
All right, did you put that on the form that Chris had filled out? That was on Chris's? Okay.
No, I will just attach this with everything.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll need to sign contract?
Is there a contract drawn up?
Not at this point in time. So we will need to sign contract. I'm, I think our county attorney needs to draw it out because as a real estate agent, I can't act in both positions. I just. Because otherwise, I'm, my, I'm really screwing my broker out of commission and I can't do that.
Well, I thought at one time something was mentioned about using Robertson Eddie out there.
We are using Robert and Eddie for earnest money. So we'll need earnest money of ten percent out there and we'll also need proof of payment or proof of.
Credit letter.
Credit, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it, okay. And we'll need all of that. And then, I don't know, do you want to have Roberts and Eddie draw up the contract? Or do you want to have our county attorney?
If our county attorney would do it, that would be great to save us some dollars. Put him to work up there doing that. But if he refuses, rejects to do it, have to go to them out there.
Okay.
And not only that, we're going to have to get the abstract down to the abstract office.
I have all of that stuff in my office when you guys first requested this. It's just been sitting back there on my desk.
Yeah, they can read and follow it with cheers on it.
Yeah, it's been back there for over a month.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we accept the bid from D V D E L L C for forty-five zero zero five.
I will second that.
All right. So the bid has been accepted, congratulations.
All in favor?
All in favor? Bye.
Happy remodeling.
Yeah. So if you just want to get, um, risks, if you can just get with Chris, the, I can take it out later. The ten percent for the earnest money made out to, make it out to Roberts and Eddie because that's where the closing will take place. And then I'll run it out there later and take a picture of it for her records and and we'll get a contract to sign.
I don't think we have any idea right now how far behind the abstract office is or anything like that. I don't know how, can't pick a date yet.
That's fine. Because I'm working on current, so not in a hurry.
We would assume doing as fast as we could. Thank you very much.
All right. And? Next public hearing is? At forty-five, nine forty-five. And that was D V D E, right?
Heard a lot of different stories on what that was. I heard at one time there was a De Soto dealership down there. That's what it started out being.
That's what I think John was telling us when we hit it.
Yeah.
And that's basically what I want, I want that garage.
And then.
Please for Justin to work all this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I I heard there was implements sold there too. And I I don't know, I never checked into that any further if there was. Somebody said one time that they thought there was some Alice Chalmers sold theirs. But I think that's what it started out with, De Soto dealership.
Well, it is amazing how big that lower, the basement level is. I mean, it's deceiving.
Yeah, extends out underneath the sidewalk. And that front on the east is not been that many years ago, that was redone.
John, that's the number we're talking. You know, on the back upstairs, there's two storage rooms. In the front.
I know. I don't know if that's like, if that's abrupt doing all the way from the very top of it or else if there's actually something up.
I think, I think there's actually open space there.
Yeah.
Explore, yeah.
Yeah.
We got into a discussion about that the other day, but we have no idea.
Because you can tell in the front, they've bricked in old windows up there.
Yeah, that's all open. Well, I can see when we looked, I looked up, I mean, another guy that was looking at the area. That looked like all open area up in there. That ceiling is well insulated. There's insulation on the roof part underneath the roof and then plus playing bad insulation lane on top of the the drop ceiling.
Meaning it's open, I think we're just going to take that false ceiling and would maybe splice one more?
Yeah. There's a lot of options here.
Yeah, you're right, there's a lot of space we never even saw. I don't know if when that was the old senior center or if that was in use up there or not. I don't.
Eventually, that building had like steam or hot water heat because there were signs of the old piping for that. Here.
Yeah, goes hard, I didn't expect it.
Yeah, it's not very nice.
This is you can buy when you leave.
Yeah, I kind of give you a pack.
That's trying to go along the same. Slam the door when you leave.
Yeah.
Let us all.
I thought it meant don't go away, man, just wait. Yeah, that, yeah, Mary, we're, we're going to go with all three. That readings. Next one said it, April twenty-second. At nine fifteen, I believe.
And then you're going to wave or reading?
No, we won't. We're going to, we're going to go, we're going to go all three. So it's a highly talked about topic. So we want to make sure everybody had their opportunity to come in here and say something.
Were you receiving calls from there?
No.
I've only had one.
I bumped into somebody that just has some concerns about, um, like maybe children not having anything to do out in that area and and a private drive being used for dog carts.
They're worried about that, huh?
They are very worried.
Because their kids come over to our, out of their subdivision over to us, from up and down the road, every time.
I know.
This is why I laugh when they're not concerned about that, I'm like, I don't really.
As a kid, we just had a swing set in the backyard to play on. Just me.
I know, and they're little. They got to sit up and put their foot like this and try to drive. You know, they're not, they're tall enough hardly, and they're letting them drive. So that's okay, we just kind of, ours is a private drive too.
So you will do the twenty-second will be the second reading, then you'll set the third that day.
Right, yeah, we'll set.
I'll just communicate with the engineer so they know.
Yeah.
Sure, they're anxious to get started.
I got nine forty-five. Yep, nine forty-five, ATV, UTV ordinance.
Make a motion, we open hearing for ATV, UTV ordinance.
At first. At first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open. Any comments?
Yeah, well, I, we all know what, have to all the hard work, not just our county, all counties put into having an ATV, UTV ordinance. Because the state at the beginning said they were just going to leave this up to counties and individual counties do what they want to do. And they, we didn't think we was going to be affected by any state code or law. Well, then after we got, everybody got into this for about four years, then they decide down in Des Moines that they're going to make a statewide ruling on this. So all the hard work the counties put into this kind of went book, time and expense and everything else. Because I know here in this county had been worked on for about a year before we brought to an ordinance. So, and they're very similar, there's some little bit of tweeting difference, something like that. But we can't override, the county can't override the state law and stuff like that. So it makes it very difficult to do anything other than what the state says we can do. So, and then I talked to the sheriff many times about that and he's communicating with these deputies. And I've had users of the road with ATVs call me and say, okay, which one are we going to buy? Are we going to go by the county, the state, or what we're going to do? And the sheriff and his deputies feel that it'd be best for complications and confusion if we just, if they just had to go by the state one and then it's clean. And everybody in the county, all the users are new. It's not like it's taking away anything from them to use right on the roads. Basically, the same thing. You know, there's a little bit of tweeting, I think, like when the turn signals that are required and stuff like that. But some of the things the state require, we can't say, we're going to take that away. We don't like the state one, so we can't do that. That's, we're still stuck with what the state says. And not only that, because it's an ordinance where we're allowing off-road vehicles on our county roads. And because of safety factors and everything that come into play, we have to, we have an extra insurance cost of nine hundred some dollars a year because we have this ordinance. And we can get rid of that cost if we get rid of the county ordinance too. So, because we're not the ones that know the state is. So we get rid of that insurance cost. So for confusion and everything, I'm I'm pretty much in favor of repealing, abolishing the the county one and going by the state rules on this and stuff like that.
This is going to make it much more enforceable by the sheriff's department. If they do have a violation, they're not having to compare ordinances and everything else, trying to figure out how to enforce it. Uh, second thing, I'd like to commend all the people that worked so hard on putting together the original ATV, UTV ordinance because they worked for about a year putting all that together. Uh, and sadly, a couple of them have passed now, but, uh, they really did put their heart and soul into this to try and come up with a really good ordinance. And it was agreeable to everybody. And it's just sad that we had to kick it to the curb now because of the state's decision. But, um, I think it's the best move that our county can make going with the state regulations.
I know, uh, and we're working on this and got it in place, one of the individuals you said had passed away was very good at, he says, if you notice any violations out there or abusers, he says, let me know because their UTV ATV club kind of did self policing. And they'd say, hey, don't be doing this because the county can take this away. So we don't need abuse out here. So they did a good job of self policing.
Right. Do I have any comments from the public?
The, my question would be, did the state have some issues that they decided to go ahead and put the ordinance in place?
Well, the biggest thing is because counties next door to each other, these ATV rides, right? And there was variation in the county ordinances. So that was one of the biggest reasons they went with statewide through the confusion when people riding from county to county. It's the same.
You know, we bring all the way up to Thunder and all the way up in there from here back and it's it's a viable.
Confusion.
Confusion, it goes where you can't go and you get.
Any other assignments from the public?
I make a motion to close the public hearing on the.
Second that.
First, by eye.
Okay, and the resolution, I need to know if you guys are going to have three readings on this or if you're just going to, as part of the resolution, waive the second and third readings?
I am favored waving.
Okay, so that seems to be brought up in the motion?
Yes. And then I'll have it in the resolution if that's the way you choose to do it.
I'll make a motion that repeal the county ordinance on ATV, UTVs and go with the state ruling on this, laws on that, and to waive the second and third reading.
And move to final adoption then today?
And final adoption today.
I second that.
All right, I have a first and a second, all in favor, signify by eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Your role call.
Lisa, thank you.
First, aye.
Port, yes.
Global A.
Thank you.
Now we need a motion for a final adoption.
I thought that was in.
Yeah, that will get it.
Okay.
Hey, we can start the next one.
GIS map request, no, no, nine one one ordinance. Chad and Evan, you two help out work on this.
You've got you, you're on, you're on the hot seat, Tony. Folks, if you don't know, Evan is our basement dweller, but he's also our GIS.
I'll leave the dungeon in case. Some hurts.
He actually has one of the offices that might actually be able to have a skylight in it.
That's good to know.
Don't you hope so?
The sauce all saw is all gone.
All right, so what we did when we put it together is, uh, we've seen that some other counties or a lot of other counties actually have an online process to request signs. So we decided to make that part of the ordinance also. Um, and the communications go to GIS nine one one and to planning and zoning. So all three, because all three departments need to be aware of it. It's just kind of a one-size-fits-all communication. The other part of this is, um, if people that are not techie want to still order it the old way, want to still get assigned the old way, they're going to talk to Chad or nine one one coordinator. We'll get them, we'll get their address going and we'll get them assigned. You know, that's pretty easy to do. So we'll have it both, we'll have it available both ways. You know, a lot of times your developer just wants to go online and do stuff online and it saves them time.
So with the Amish community, having a a paper equivalent is just a good idea?
Yes.
My question is, with having three departments involved, would it be much more or less confusing to have a single point of contact instead of going through three different departments to make your request?
Just thought you're always going to have three different departments. JS is always going to be doing the backside because they're the addressing component. Planning and zoning gets involved involved at the front side.
I don't think the resident, the owner, applicant, has to deal with all three.
No, no, they don't have to do it.
But how do they know which?
They're going to come in and they're going to talk to Chad. They're gonna come in and they're gonna talk to Chad. They don't because it's all automatically set up. Like they just fill this out and then it's automatically sent.
To?
To all three people.
As soon as they hit submit, it's got what it's called a web hooks, like created a dummy Gmail account. So it sees that someone submitted something and then it emails Chad. Yep, exactly. So it distributes itself.
Okay. So before this is outboarded, is anybody that comes in does a building, a minor plat rezoning. I'm near Amber the point of contact and then I would put together a draft back with map and I guessed them to what that number was and then I commonly communicator either hand deliver it to Evan or email it to him.
Okay.
Um, and then how this has really come about is when I came back and started driving the county roads and in my notebook would write down structures, building homes that are missing the nine one one signs.
Or faded.
So with this would be my only concern would be uh, moving forward with any of the ones that are missing, really it has to come from the homeowner. As far as the request, unless maybe Chris, I'm not sure if he, you know, drives county roads or does any type of inspections of of certain areas that that need them. I can I can still do that. I have no issue with that. I'm just a firm believer that we need them.
Door secondary roads guys give you any feedback when they happen to drive by and see a missing sign or a structure that doesn't have?
No, I mean, I think that was theoretically the thought process when when Gary Gissel was part of it. About that, you know, road grader would communicate it just.
It does, I think I've received, because a lot of times it's a lot of other signs that are missed. I've noticed that over years, you know. Who you you brought up, who's actually gonna do the policing? You say if, I'll use this as an example. If the owner comes in, gets assigned to Chad and start not with Chad, from Chris out there and stuff. And let's say if they take it out there to get stuck in the garage. Never gets put up. There are any violations or anything that's done. Who's gonna go, who's gonna have time to go out there and police? And make sure that the sign has been put up or hasn't been moved. Some people like to do additional landscaping so they can groom their their britches and everything. And things get moved all the time out there in the county and then going along with that, I know, is it gonna be allowed? I know in this county even, there's a lot of them that are attached to the mailbox. Is that gonna be allowed? And a lot of out there that are already, so is they gonna be grandfathered or they just need to keep them there? How's that can be dealt?
With ordinances written, the enforceability falls under Chris's own duties.
Right.
And they're supposed to send a photograph of the completed site.
Right.
And the completion survey, there's a box for a photo.
Yeah, there's a box for a photo and you know what I mean? If they're obviously if they're having problems getting a photo, then they'll contact Chris and Chris can go and take it and upload it for them.
Say if Chris wants to patrol the new one, they actually can upload. Every time they hit submit, it'll create a point on a map where they locate their driveway. So I can insert, uh, put that feature into his app so he can navigate straight to each of the new ones to make sure if he if he feels so inclined to do so.
And as far as the grandfather, the way I, this is my interpretation. I don't know how Chris will interpret it, but just like in twenty twenty, certain ordinance, like we talked about the other day, subdivisions. Any new subdivision residentially has to have some type of a paved road, concrete or asphalt. Any of the ones before that, Franks, Jody Puffs, they're grandfathered in, they can still have gravel. So I would say moving forward, whenever this is adopted, that from that point on would be enforceable to as you drive in the driveway, it's gonna be to the left at the height that is recommended within the.
Yeah, we tried to make it a height that was out of the snowdrifts.
Yep.
Because you're gonna have some issue where people wanna yank them. Um, and and they'll either wanna fasten it to a building or let's say they have a secondary dwelling that is half mile down the road and they don't wanna trim around them all around it. I mean, there are times that I've installed them in the past, drive by and I see it's gone. Just some some people are that way.
Yeah, and this does actually have an enforceability piece at the end. You know, so it has something you can fall back on and I would hate to ever have to do that. And it also has an appeal section. So if they thought that something, if maybe the maintainer hit it and all of a sudden they're stuck trying install a new sign, then wait a minute, it wasn't our fault, it was the maintainer's fault. So we're gonna come before the board and we're gonna say, hey, secondary looking to this.
I would say probably seventy-five percent of the point of contact or more is gonna be myself. Which I I think it needs to be that way. I I'm not sure when I left. The reason why it got moved from my office. And again, I I sort of take pride in it. I'm I'm a firm believer that just because you got a phone number, you get you get a nine one one sign. I'm I'm a firm believer, machine shed grating them. All those extra accessories throughout where some farmer or some president can be. And if they're injured, they need to have a directional way to go. The only other thing I would add is, um, in the past three to six months, either Tim or myself have come across some areas that need some signage. One is on Cunningham Road where you actually have to go to Blockcock County and then come back off a lane and you cross county.
Cunningham Road north. I think, yeah, I I know exactly where you're at. I agree.
And maybe Dawn, you know the budget numbers, but I would like to have that one. There's a subdivision on Kentucky Avenue as well, north of Burco's. Several hog facilities up there in the wind turbine on the corner. There's a subdivision in there if you drive in, you have no idea where those homes are. And then another one is south on Benson Shady where Nick Donnelly lives. There's a red home with an arched um, entryway. But I would like to take point on that and design where you drive in the subdivision, basically there's lies all over the place. Evan and myself and Chris worked on getting Crute Boulevard cleaned up after the junk car got cleaned up. And there's several cabins and campers back in there.
Say a bunch of pop-ups.
But those three areas, I mean, to give us the flexibility to do those um, order them and take care of them, because I believe the county should have taken care of them five, six, ten years ago. Um, I don't know if that's something that we could do.
When you have a subdivision like that where everything's bigger all out. Do you have a nine one one sign at the entrance and then also at the specific property or how do they do that?
I did write that into this ordinance. I'm not finding it right now.
So what we asked, is this not detailed how we do it necessarily in there? But at the at the road driveway for the subdivision, you have all the numbers listed. You know, smallest to largest. And then as you go into the first Y, you may have sixteen ninety-two with an arrow this way. And sixteen ninety with an arrow to wherever you're going this way. And then if you come to another Y, there may be even an arrow this way and arrow this way. Basically, it becomes tedious instead of just one sign for the home, maybe there's three.
Yeah.
But it's it's really important and and uh if a lot of the places, like let's say Purmark Subdivision, um, two hundred and eighty street southwest part of the county. When I came back, that was one of the projects that I did because all of them had just numbers engraved in the rocks. Well, you got FedEx drivers, UPS guys driving around and they're not knowing where to go. And we ended up sticking all kinds of signs at every residence and we have a couple of Ys in those subdivisions as well.
Yeah, now it's the entrance area, or say we're gonna list all of them. Who's gonna incur that, who's gonna be responsible for the cost on that?
That's why I, that's why I wondered what the budget was. I think the county, I would like to pose that these three subdivisions be taken care of by the county. And then move them forward.
The developer does move them forward.
Move them forward the developer.
Right, yeah, because it says if more than two properties with address identification markers share a common driveway. A single added address identification marker provided the range of addresses within the shared driveway shall be assigned with individual address identification markers placed at the access for the individual properties following the address identification marker location guidelines. So right there driveway, then you have the that way, I don't want an ambulance running out there and running around out there in the middle of the night trying to track down a house that's in a subdivision. You know, on a circular road or whatever.
A great example would be Brad Nepper moving forward. He would be the developer. He would be responsible for the one at the road, um, that says seventeen seventy-three, one through twenty-four. He would install that one. And then as the structures are built, one through twenty-four, the actual builder would be responsible for that. They would get the sign from me or Evan and they they won the uh, before the letter of occupancy goes to the owner, the developer. They would pound that in and I would sign one.
That makes sense to do that, yes. Uh, I have one other question for clarification. I don't know if this should be for sure, hundred percent sure if this should be driveway or roadway from section nine. See. You and Evan both want to look at that.
That's a driveway. The address identification marker shall be no less than six feet and no more than fifteen feet from the edge of the driveway. So your driveway is here and you want it within that certain corner of that driveway on the left inside. Then so many feet, so we know where to, so they know where to turn.
So there's no, there's no setback from the edge of the roadway, the shoulder. This is just.
And you want. I think the setbacks are earlier, don't they?
Yeah, this one would be referring to you drive in the driveway. This is the left edge, fifteen feet from there, or no more.
No more than fifteen, it's gotta be at least.
And six foot tall.
Four foot.
Four foot above the ground.
Four foot, yeah.
But it's gotta be six foot away from the driveway, not closer.
No less than six feet and no more than fifteen.
So between six and fifteen. So this is the driveway here pulling in. It can be no, no less than six. No more than fifteen.
That's like a foot taller than me. And that would allow people to pull in with rain bins and or with wagons and.
Yeah, not take out the sign.
Are you talking about height or?
No. It's okay if I just zap him.
Okay, just play your song, it's cool.
We gotta have a hoop of a party here. It can't be all serious.
I know, it's true. Do you have any other questions, Clayton?
No, that's it. And I'm sure it's like anything else. I can't see a, hopefully a road grader guy, when he pushes snow, he go back there knocking over. I mean, if it is, that'll be on secondary road stops.
Right.
Well, just same as a mailbox, we have reversed forty dollars for mailbox damage.
And we have any comments?
There's a public too, once that happened.
Sheriff.
I would like to actually, um, there is one thing here that I've noticed. Um, at this, maybe it doesn't even need to be. Kind of spells it out later on. Okay, it says, the cost for an address identification marker shall be borne by the nine one one service board. That is at this time. I mean, if his, when the nine, uh, if that budget starts to dwindle down, then obviously we'll need to to revisit that and and charge for the actual cost to the homeowner. So I don't know if not, first, um, sentence under section six needs to be stricken. Um, because I think if I remember right, Evan, it's not the cost is on one of these things, one of your, we put.
Um, I think, I believe we did at one point, but I thought we struck that.
Back and put about, back on that. And then it actually does come down here and it says that the service board can set fees for iden- address identification markers and markers and other related materials payable to nine one one as they see fit. So I don't know if we need to strike that with having the other caveat down below or how we want to handle it.
The homeowner for the sign.
At this point in time, no. But as if nine one one, because that's also, the nine one budget is what we pay for our radio services out of too. So you know, if if that service starts to dwindle that down then we might need to pass those.
What's the difference between the nine one one sign and road identification markers?
That's my corner of
Benson.
Clay Boulevard and.
Yeah.
The secondary roads takes care of that, identifying roads.
Yeah.
Okay.
It says on section eight that the subdivision developer responsible.
Subdivisions are gonna be responsible for their signage.
They may be.
So they're gonna, so contractor Joe Lo is gonna make a sub, do a subdivision and he's gonna have to order the street signs from the county and install them.
Yep, that's part of the, that is also part of the infrastructure because you have your concrete roads that they would have to do curb and gutter and that would be part of that infrastructure.
An opinion on that?
Yes, love one.
We love opinions.
From a, from a builder developer standpoint, when that ordinance was adopted. I'll be surprised over the next ten to fifteen years, how many developers actually develop in our county because of the requirement to uh, pave or asphalt the entire subdivision. The expense above and beyond, you know, what Lucetamoff spent, like above and beyond Dick Paine back in the nineties, above and beyond, but it's much easier to develop agricultural land with the contours and the elevation changes. And do what the Franks did down by Kloski.
Have gravel instead.
And I I agree with that, that I'm gonna use two hundred and eighty for example. People out there, they they want that road paved and, you know, two eighty and stuff like that. But I think it's fine that to have the, say, that road going there where you're having all that traffic going there to have it paved. But not through private road areas. It'd be no difference. I wouldn't want somebody coming and saying, I gotta pave my, my farm driveways. It's private property. I should have the right to do whatever I want on that private property.
Oh, that's part of property. You expect them to pay the expenses. We just did catalars and we paid for it, the homes.
And that way, if there's a pothole out there, it's on you. If a unhappy with this, anything out there, the dust, it's on you. We we've got the good road getting to that driveway.
So when that development was thought about then, who should have paid that road?
Well, see, that wasn't in the ordinance. That was a trouble. That's why they got away with out there. They just, it's no different up there, ops up there. Then the one then.
Three twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now we won't have any more subdivisions like that because the uh a developer cannot afford to come in and put in.
The the price of land per acre plus the infrastructure of that, um, is cost prohibitive to develop. In in the rural parts, in the city, you know, the city's always helped with some infrastructure dependent on sewer water. Commonly though, the developer still has to pay for the road and the street and the green, but I just think it's something moving forward that we need to assess.
And not require internal.
Interning.
I I agree with that.
I'll get off my soapbox.
Any other comments from the public?
So all this discussion, if we come up with anything we needed to tweet on this.
I think it looks really good. I think you guys did a good job putting them together.
One thing on the, on the contact information for Chris here. It it I think it all mentioned on there, an email address. Well, how's the Amish gonna get a hold of me? They they don't have computers to get a hold of me. So they're gonna have.
Think I had a.
I thought in the one form I seen all had on there was his email address, not a phone. We need to have more than one way of contacting him.
I had a phone. Thought that it was in there, but I'm not seeing it either.
We'll make sure that we have, we had a good phone number.
Yeah, see right here, just got contact.
Oh, that's for sign. We had his number in there someplace.
That's what too.
Oh, you can contact Chris here with questions, maybe it needs to go right there.
So everything I see on there, just email addresses, no phone number.
If his phone number stayed the same with him, may change.
Um, I think the phone number stayed the same.
Which number you put down, office or the cell phone?
Probably the office. That way. That office phone should stay as an office phone, cell phones. Even have a different employee, then you gotta change that one. I think the best just to have the official county office number. And they can leave a message on.
Can make that change this afternoon? Just wait for the next one. It's the self-disaster reporting yet. Without, or uh, me and Chris. Rolled the ball a little bit to see how that could potentially go, possibility.
I'd make a motion, we close the public hearing on that ordinance amendment.
First, I have a second, all in favor. Do we wanna waive the second and the third reading on this one?
I think we should probably have a second just to review the modifications we made to it. And then we can always waive the third.
What did you modify?
Phone number.
On the.
Between that, this, between our old one and this, everything.
This is, this is what you gave me. This is what we published. Did you change anything on in this right now?
No, no, the only thing we're gonna do is we're gonna add us a phone number too.
I don't, I don't care about your permission form. I'm caring about what we published in the paper, because if something was changed, then it needs to be republished. And the modification word, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Uh, the code of Iowa.
I would think we might move forward, set a second more hearing. Then we can decide if we can move forward further or not.
Okay.
Call that one.
Well, we need probably a motion.
I'd make a motion to go.
When do you wanna have the second hearing?
Can we do it at the same time we were. April twenty second. I think we had nine fifteen erased.
I don't think it'll take very long, so.
The Maryville at nine fifteen on the twenty second.
Should we give that Maryville maybe ten minutes, Chad? Do you think that's enough?
I think so.
And twenty five then. First reading.
Yeah, we're wishing to pass the first reading and just set the second.
I'll, I'll make a motion to uh pass the first reading. And to set second hearing for April twenty second at nine twenty five.
For a second, that. Why don't we do that ahead of the Maryville? Like at nine ten? Be done with it and go to the Maryville, and that way we don't have to have limitation on the Maryville. That'd be acceptable.
Okay, I'll modify it to nine ten. I, I, I was thinking about that originally too, but.
No, I, I think it's gonna go really quick, so I don't.
I have a first and a second, all in favor, signify by I.
Alright.
I, motion carries. Alright, next up is GIS map request. Okay, um, my friend Evan here. Has now has the general public coming up and asking him to do maps for them. And they're not like emergency maps, they're not fire department maps, ambulance maps, like any of our normal work that we do with the cities.
Right.
And other government agencies. My feeling is if we start opening him up and allowing him to take all kinds of requests from the general public, then we're opening up a can of worms. But.
Where, where can it grow at? What? It can really grow fast when word gets out.
Right, and I mean, I don't think we want that, because then are, he's not available processor and our other county departments.
Right now, you're doing it for public entities, right, for cities. Anything for like fire departments.
Ambulance services.
Transit services, things like that, public agencies, and stuff like that, nothing quite.
Oh, I consistently have had, uh, I have had some folks come to me. From. I wanna say, uh, or just random other departments. A couple of times, Secondary Roads sent me someone. I didn't realize they weren't with Secondary Roads until. At the time, Don Chalka showed up in my office. Like. Cause that was during the uh. You, you were here, of course, the um. Is Drainage District?
Oh, Eric Creek.
Yeah, that one, that was a fun one. I did, I did not realize I was entering that. And I was, so.
I wasn't here.
Hey, or.
Oh, I thought you said I wasn't here. I was gonna say I was one of the guys.
Oh, that was um, I remember who it was, but uh, they just got sent down. Got sent into my office and the whole time, cause he had documents from Secondary Roads. I thought he was Secondary Roads. So. Uh. Then just. Ended up making some maps for him and. This last one was uh. The assessor's office ended up getting a guy who wanted to know all CSR ground in the county fifty five or less. Then he wanted me to remove all the floodplains, towns and cities. Uh, I removed our radio path for all the towers, all that stuff, cause it looks like he wants modeling for. What land is available to put turbines on, assuming the ordinance goes through as currently stated.
And if that individual, where could they be directed to go and see all these soil stuff, so you don't have that.
USD, but then they wouldn't have the uh, the other stuff cut out.
Right, but they're the same.
I was gonna say, that's all on our website too. If they go on the assessor's website.
Yeah, so I.
If, if I wanna know, you could. That would save me a lot of time.
That's why I started gathering pricing information from other counties.
We start opening up Evan to this kind of stuff, it's, it's never gonna end. It should come from our direction.
I'm just saying, he should be billing these people.
I don't.
At an appropriate.
Flynn has it at sixty an hour.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't even think we should be doing it, because then we're opening him up for all kinds of random requests from the public. I mean, it shouldn't have ever been started in the first place unless it was, you know, like a waterway. We do waterways.
Um.
Is that in your job description?
No.
Yeah, I don't believe it is, no.
To make sure that the words put out so that. Just tell you to tell people if you know, if you're not one of these agencies, like a party department, county or city or something like that.
Right.
You can't even go out and put a bunch of stuff on, even for realtors and developers and stuff. I think that would be up to the untues.
Right. Like if it's a, if it's a public data request, I mean, there was a previous Supreme Court rule, I can't deny it, but uh. If I'm putting together a map and doing spatial analysis, that seems to be. That's above and beyond. Like if they want a picture of their property. I, usually I, I don't really care. It's a picture of your property.
But that's also available on the assessor's website, the assessor's website. That's how I do my research.
As opposed to like Hazelton Fire, who had me build. It's like six forty two inch by forty two. I made a wall. Yeah.
And I would just, I, I'd send him a couple people, but prior to him impeaching in work. He gave a quote first and then he was paid Gary McElroy. Gary McElroy wanted one of the one third area.
Oh, Gary works with the, the city though.
Yeah.
Jordy Alver won one of his, of his farms, so he could pin where his sprayers and applicators needed to go. He worked with Evan. You know, people come into my office and have their color copies. Bob Q wanted some of, of the aerial map of leases. Give him a price and then he pays. So, you know, it, it need, if he does anything outside, it has to be paid for.
If, right.
So you've already engaged in this and, and no money is exchanged here.
Um, with the big prints in the past, yeah.
I mean, on this project.
Oh, no, I, I've not distributed anything and I've not received payment for anything.
Is that, you know, obviously this is contentious topic, but as we go back and. You know, when Mark Trumar first comes in my office and says, oh, this is gonna generate so much money for your. County and this should not cost, this project will should not cost anything to the county. That I had other activists come in and state the same thing, Swatty and Mike Carberry. And you think about the time that we spent over the past two years. My knowledge, we haven't gotten a dime. And this obviously is one of those projects that. Um, it's no different than people coming to me with zoning. They could have come to me and we, I have a budget to do each year. For certain prints, contractors come in, Rick Rashford, septic's want soil map so they can figure out. What type of septic system's gonna work properly. Maybe we're an Amish individual wants to look at three or four different farm areas where he wants to build a house in the future. So I have budgeted, not to that level of descriptions of deed file, but.
Right, but I mean, I just don't think that he should be working for the general public. I mean, it should be for. One of the departments, because that's what his job description is. And, you know, and I mean, even if, even if it wasn't this. Thing, I never knew this was happening before, and I'm like, wait a minute, this isn't in your job description, you know. We need to kind of rat, ratchet it back and, and put. Something.
Absolutely, I think it's a bit different. The applicant, right? And I've been asking for that since day one. Come in and work with me, just like. Any other rezoning applicant does, and then if the request comes from me or some other department head, that's totally different, I.
Right, yes.
But, yeah, I, I. We don't want the public just going to him, he's gonna be overloaded and not give our type of.
Right. Yeah, I can look at Lynn's stuff, but then I know the GIS guys at Lynn, there's eight of them, and then Secondary Roads has two of them.
Only Ash.
Yeah.
You have, we have one of you.
Hi.
Alex out there and Brian and Phil, I think one of them three would have to come with you for.
And watershed.
Since I've started asking like, okay, but are you with the county? Or possibly even other county?
Well, maybe we.
Some, some entity.
Maybe we need to send something out to department heads too. That, you know, hey, don't, don't send people, random people to a G I S person. If you have a request for him, then you make the request, but. And I guess anything, cause you do all the watersheds, so if there's a watershed request, then that should come from you. That it.
I think so.
I would just say too. That's tough. From where I was here back in two thousand and eleven, where we were mapping wise, we didn't have any. To where we are now, the number of layers that we have, he has a well layer from state that every world is permitted. I don't have to travel to every single site. I can do my analysis. For the septic, we go the distances kind of and communicate with the contractors, so. You know, his budget, hopefully we continue to support it and understand the value. The next thing I'll say is, and we're finding this out with the absence of Steve Maynard. That tighten us all together with communication.
Well, Steve was great.
You know, from my permitting to, to him, to nine one one signs, you know, uh. The new individual eventually will, you know, probably get to that point, but we've had a little bit of a gap. And then the other. Individual, whenever she leaves, Chris will know this too, is Marine. I mean, she, she is so imperative on the timeliness of reading legal descriptions and she'll find an S that's a five or a period that should have been a comma. And things like that, that is so um crucial to our turnover and turnaround of our uh. Minor plats and, and rezonings and all that kind of stuff.
Amazing, but forty years of experience will buy ya. I know that, Evan, just stick around.
With enough, uh, with enough coffee and classic rock, Steve Maynard was able to do a lot. I think he did, yeah. Can you get the sauce all?
Don't encourage him.
Okay, I guess you got the direction.
Okay, can I have some type of guidance for the minutes and probably an emotion?
Okay.
That way it is public information and folks can see this.
Absolutely.
I make a motion that uh. When requests come through for Evan, for certain mapping and identifying certain things, it's gotta be an emergency. Agency of the county or city or.
A Buchanan County government entity?
There you go, Buchanan County, yes.
Not for private.
Sounds good. I'll reach out to the gentleman who contacted me and, and uh, tell them that we uh, we don't offer that service.
Thank you. And I, do I have a first, I have a second?
Second.
All in favors, signify by I.
Alright.
Go. I have a public comment once. Not enough today.
Some folks argue that wind turbines grow electricity and should therefore be zoned as agricultural. Corn grows, soybeans grow, grass grows. Electricity does not grow. It is manufactured, just like solar does not grow electricity, it manufactures it. In the Solar Energy Standard of the Buchanan County zoning ordinance, it states that large solar energy facilities may only be constructed in areas that are zoned M. Manufacturing. To be consistent. The proposed WEX ordinance requires that any WEX may only be constructed in areas that are zoned M manufacturing district. Furthermore, under Buchanan County ordinance six, section sixteen. Use regulations for M manufacturing district. Towers, including wireless communication towers, are listed under principal permitted uses. As you will find on Next Era's website, the turbines sit atop towers. Which are one of the key components of a wind turbine. No tower, no wind turbine. Again, towers are listed under principal permitted uses for the M manufacturing designation. You do not grow electricity, you manufacture it. Also, I just noted this morning. Uh, the former governor, Mr. Keating, former governor of Oklahoma, just found a video. Saying that they made a big mistake in wind turbines in Oklahoma. For several reasons, of some which were some promises that were made that were materialized. So you might want to Google that, see if you can find that video that Mr. Keating put out, former governor of Oklahoma.
Right. If I could make a comment to that, I, I asked Chad about the manufacturing going to the M, you know, because. From the city, you don't really wanna spot zone, and he's like, well, he said in the county, we do that all the time. And he said, if, if they're. If that little location for. That wind turbine is a M, that's a different color, so we can quickly see where all, where they're all located. You know, and he, and it's not gonna, they're not gonna pay, like, when I think of manufacturing, I'm thinking, oh my goodness. Like you have a manufacturing plant and that's actually like a commercial property, and so then they pay a higher amount of taxes. With wind turbines, they do not pay a higher amount of taxes. On manufacturing. You know, it's the same amount of tax, whether they're ag or whether they're manufacturing, it's just easier for Evan and for. Chad to pinpoint where they're located.
Yeah, because the taxing is by acquisition cost.
Well, and it, it's like, yeah, it just doesn't change for them, so.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Right. So that would be that's, you know, cause I, I was curious, I asked. And that was the explanation I got. He said, it makes it a lot easier for him to, to know where they're at, where they're located. Quickly, otherwise it's just the whole parcel. You know, if you have a hundred acres, it's all the whole hundred acres or however many acres. That's my comment. There any other public comments?
I just have uh, something that's kind of bothered me from the last meeting, uh, when Brian purchased the. So I understand this, right? He purchased the excavator. And was trading in the old excavator. That amount, that thirty thousand just seemed very low to me. But for the. But he also said that he did not get another bid, cause he. He only had one place to go. Is that normally how things are purchased through the county?
No.
Don't you always have to have two bids of some sort or at least something to compare it to? You know, has somebody else have given you more for that old excavator? And I know time issue, you don't wanna have to go out there and sell it yourself.
Yeah.
But.
I.
That bothered me a little bit, that we only had one source.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and I see where you're coming from with that, because I asked. Yeah, I, I, I agree, and I see where you're coming from with that, because I asked, you know, could John Deere be.
And you asked those questions, but we really didn't get an answer.
But I think what it is, is what happened to me, they got a certain criteria specifications, they want the machine to be able to do.
And he did say.
And I think that narrowed it down to where Cat was, it almost, you know, it could be construed as. You're using that for a reason to handpick where you're getting machine. Or it could be construed in that manner, but I, I think they got certain criteria that. Certain things that that machine's gotta have the ability to do, certain attachments and stuff, and I think. The cat met all that criteria. And that, that's my thought on that, Kathy.
Well, I just thought it, it's not a good practice not to have a second bid. I mean, I don't even go out. Always get two or three, if we, when we built our house and when we put siding on the shed. We have three bids to see, you know, are they all comparable? If they are, you know, kind of thing.
To make a good faith effort to try and get multiple bids so you can kinda weigh where you're at. But in the case of some things, you may be lucky to even get one bid and.
Like, is how far can you go out of the area? I mean.
And we.
To purchase something.
I know we have on way far out, United States, by now.
It, it just bothered me and I.
Oh, that's a good comment.
I'd like to segue off of that comment. I think we really are doing the county a disservice by just trading that in because we probably could get like maybe twice that if we sold it on. On Purple Haze or whatever that, that website is.
Home, my little two-year-old grandson, he goes through it and it's, wow, I mean. And it's got excavators and cats and it's got everything. Oh, yeah, and he's, and he's just going through it like it's a, like a little book, you know. So I'm looking at him when I got home and I'm like, I mean, he's sort of used.
They were using their.
Big prices. Eighty, ninety thousand.
Yeah, so I think that maybe, I, I would like to have seen us try to sell that ourselves. We have the personnel there to take the pictures and put it out there. I mean, not like these.
And that's just something down the road, you know, if you have time, cause it does take time. You have to have somebody that's willing to do all that.
But I mean, it's, you know, I mean, what are they gonna do, raise the price of the unit thirty thousand and then we have. You know, once the new unit comes in, then we take the time and, you know, if it takes us, uh, six weeks to say, to sell it, it takes six weeks, but you, maybe you've gotten forty-five thousand for it. Or maybe you've got sixty thousand for it instead of the thirty. I mean, that's, that's how many dump trucks full of rock.
And I kinda said the same thing to the representative who's here. I said, you're gonna take that and more than double the price of it than somebody else.
I just think, you know, this farm machinery alone, this, any, any kind of equipment is just monotonous. Used especially because the new was sold.
Oh, and a private farmer or guy in construction or something, they'd look at that and say, wow, that is dirt cheap, I'll buy it. You could do it for a hundred thousand and they'd probably still think it was a pretty good deal.
Sell it and still get thirty thousand.
Some. That's a good comment.
Some, some companies, it just is, just, there's protected, what they call protected territories. I mean, we couldn't go to another cat dealer and ask them to put a bid. They wouldn't do that. Or, uh, Murphy Tractors got this territory for John Deere, we couldn't do that. It's a little different than some other equipment. I know like, experience I had is who's getting bids for, uh. At mental health institute on lawn, tractors and equipment. We were able to go to several John Deere dealers, and they've actually, the John Deere dealerships were bidding against each other. As a, on some of the, yeah, some of this, uh, commercial stuff is a different thing like that. But that doesn't mean you can't go to another brand, you know.
Is there anything else?
Good point, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy, I appreciate it. Hearing nothing else, can I ask for a motion to adjourn? He said no. First and second. Do I have a second? Okay, I will second the motion. All in favor, aye.